John.
Yes.
Louis.
No.
Marat.
Oh, yes.
Dove.
Dove?
Doug.
Dove. Okay, now vote from Dove.
He's watching TV.
Um, anybody else?
Yeah, Marcio.
Marcio.
And one more.
His wife.
Crystal.
Crystal. Okay, I think it passes. The noes were, I voted yes.
Louis and.
Louis voted no.
Louis and Marcio were noes.
Louis and Marcio were noes.
And no, no vote from Dove.
No, no vote, Dove abstained. And, uh, okay, so, no. And yes was Carl, me, Marat, and Crystal. Okay, so the motion passes. Next item is, uh, hopefully it won't take as long as this one. Gym equipment.
Okay, I've tried to contact some other companies to get competitive bids on replacing the equipment in the gym that needs to be replaced. So far, nobody has come back, other than, um, Total Fitness, who is the company that supposedly takes care of the equipment now. They have quoted us to replace two ellipticals, one recumbent cycle, one upright cycle, and, uh, put in a new treadmill for a total of forty-eight hundred dollars, uh, plus a two-hundred-dollar removal charge of the old equipment. So that would be a total of five thousand dollars.
What if somebody wants some free equipment, can they just pick it up and then we save the two-hundred dollars?
Well, the equipment, the, the equipment that's, first of all, it's two-hundred dollars to take out all of the old equipment. Uh, secondly, the old equipment that's in there is not usable. We'd make wonderful anchors for anybody who has a boat.
Anybody got a vote? Okay. Um, what's this Life Fitness Next Generation trade-in? What is that?
You have that, you have that treadmill in there now, and it's not functioning at all, can't be repaired. He's giving you a two-hundred-dollar credit towards the new one.
He wants that? He wants that?
I guess he'll cannibalize it for parts.
Okay. Okay, so basically, we save the two-hundred, two-hundred dollars on, on the disposal charge there. Right, but they're giving us a two-hundred-dollar credit also on the equipment.
Is that, is that maintenance also? Is that including maintenance on it?
No, this is just for the, we have a, we have a separate deal with them for maintenance. This is just for the parts.
What's the maintenance deal? What if the maintenance?
I don't have that in front of me.
And what about warranty on it?
I'll, I'll have to see what the warranty is on it.
So all these are bad, all these?
All of these, all of these pieces of equipment are bad.
Okay, um, now, is there's no warranty on any of it, is what you're saying?
Oh, I didn't, no, I didn't, he didn't, he didn't mention a warranty on here, but I will call him. If you decide, we can do a contingent upon, you know, what, what the warranty is, and then, uh, I can let you know, or we can just table it, and I'll keep looking for more.
Yeah, there's been a lot of complaints about the gym, I don't, I don't want to table this.
And are these new, new equipment or used equipment?
No, it's all new.
It's all new equipment. Rabbit has a question.
Actually, there's, actually, there's two treadmills that are bad. One, the, the tread is completely gone, the other, the digital won't work right on it. So there's, there's two we have to look at. Can I ask, if, if, if this company is, is, is coming out to maintain this equipment, and if it's broken, then they're not doing that job.
No, it's not maintained.
It's not maintained, but don't we have a contract with the company?
You know, I, I, I hate to keep throwing this up, but a lot of these contracts were done before I got here. I'm in the process of reviewing all of the contracts and putting people to speak to the fire. Why, as you said, if this guy is getting paid to come out here and maintain, why isn't it being maintained? Well, the answer he gave me was, I gave this, uh, proposal to the previous manager something like eight months ago.
Okay, so for the last eight months, he's been maintaining equipment that don't need to be maintained?
No, he's saying that, well, there's other equipment in there also. But I'm just saying.
It don't work.
I'm just saying, yes, I agree with you. Well, let's go get the other manager and find out why she about that.
No, wait, uh, we don't need to trash previous manager. Um, the, uh, the, the warranty issue seems like to be a moot point. If, we already have a contract with them to maintain it, why would we need a warranty?
Well, because there's two different things. To maintain it and, and have a warranty are two different things.
Yeah, manufacturing a warranty.
I mean, if.
Yeah, if it breaks beyond repair.
Okay.
Then you use your warranty.
Everything can be repaired. You can go to Africa.
Okay, um.
Did, did we try anybody else?
I've called four or five other companies, and I've gotten no results back from them.
No results at far.
Not even willing to come out here and take a look at anything.
So they do delivery and everything, correct? They deliver?
Yes, yes.
They'll deliver and sign, and come and install them and do everything. All in the same day?
Well, I don't know if we'll get all the pieces in in one day, but. I would, yeah, I would say a few days.
Okay, how about this, how about what?
Do you use the equipment?
I do, maybe sucks, but this is a lot of money.
Which is the best?
It's taken for a long time.
Right. It's forty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I, I actually have gone online and looked at the prices, and they're, they're very competitive.
We, we have the money, um, on this year's budget because we didn't use anything this year, apparently. So the money is there for this, in this year's budget.
I'm sorry, I don't think it's a matter of the money.
Right, it's a matter of doing it right.
I think it's a matter of the track worker that this company has had, within the last eight months. They've been getting paid, uh, uh, stipend every time they come out here, knowing that the, the equipment don't work. So they really haven't been maintaining anything, but they've been, but they've been, they've been collecting fines for the last eight months. So now, why should we give them more money to do something that they haven't been doing for the last eight months? Because nobody was paying attention. They were just getting a paycheck. So are they willing to take the last eight months paycheck that they've already received?
I don't, I don't know what there is, what we're paying them.
I just think that we should try different people.
Well, he should know that, he's been looking at the record.
I do not know what we're paying them, I was even aware that we had this contract with this company, so. Um, what, what is the most critical piece that needs to be replaced? Rabbit, do you?
I would, I would say it's probably the, uh, the treadmill.
The treadmill? Why don't we just purchase the treadmill for now?
And the bikes.
And the bikes.
And the bikes.
Well, the, the, uh, that's basically everything on here.
That's everything on here. What, what about the elliptical, is that, what about?
The ellipticals are usable.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So you want to, you want to take the two ellipticals off and look at the, the two bikes and the treadmill? So that would drop the price, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah, that would go, yeah. That would drop twenty-two hundred.
Due to the fact that we are already way over budget this year, how about we basically gather all the way, but please can I January? Ask you for a budget?
Um, yeah, it doesn't really make a difference, because the money is money, money is money, you know? But, um.
At this point in, in the year, by the time he gets the stuff out, it'll be next year.
Okay, it'll be next year anyways, thanks. So, um, okay, what, what about, okay, so we, I think, uh, we should have a motion to at least replace the two bikes. Is it two bikes? Yeah, recumbent cycle, upright cycle, and the treadmill, the one treadmill. Hold on, hold on. The treadmill, uh, somebody mentioned there's two tread, Rabbit, you mentioned there's two treadmills? Are they identical treadmills?
The one treadmill is completely gone, the other one I.
Are they, are they identical treadmills?
Not identical, I think they're all the same.
Okay.
The one is a digital.
Alright, so why don't we just do that? Okay, the, uh, the recumbent cycle, the upright cycle, and the, um, the treadmill. And what about this trade-in thing? Oh, yeah.
Well, that would be on the treadmill.
Trade, trade-in on the treadmill, and, uh, plus, would it still be a two-hundred-dollar, um, disposal fee? Because it's less.
Even if you took one piece, it was going to be two-hundred.
So I, I don't want to, you know, make people suffer through the entire holidays until January, um. So let's, let's try to do the cycle, the two cycles, and the treadmill for a total of, uh, let's see, that would be twenty-five? That's twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Well, because there were some complaints that maybe we should continue looking for the, uh. Say it again?
It's brand-new equipment.
It's brand-new, yes.
Yes, it's brand-new equipment.
But they come out here to maintain the, uh, these equipment, once they're there.
Well, I, I can look for a different company, you mean, maintenance on it.
Okay, um, well, uh, apparently, the, the ellipticals are in a little bit better shape, so they could probably wait until January, but the other stuff isn't. Miriam.
They, they should be replaced, but they are used.
Okay.
You're not renting these, you are buying them.
We are, we're buying them. You mean going to the store and buying them there? Is this, is it the same price at the store, more or less, right? Okay.
Actually, I looked it up in a couple of places locally, and it's more expensive.
Okay, uh, so I think we should at the very least do the, the three items.
The other way, you're getting five items. Only about a thousand dollars.
Two thousand, two hundred dollars more for the two extra items.
The four-eight-hundred dollars is not bad. It's not bad.
Where do you think, Rabbit, you're the biggest user?
I don't think it's a bad price for five, you're going to get five.
The problem is them maintaining the.
But that's, that's a different issue. We can, we can attract that contract separately.
So we can do that.
Yeah. Forty-eight total. Okay, uh, I, I take that back, let's just make a motion to, uh, a motion, I need, we need a motion to, uh, approve this bid for forty-eight, for forty-eight hundred dollars, plus the two, is that plus two hundred? Yeah, two, plus two hundred for the disposal, so it's going to be five thousand total. Um, and Marat made the motion, and Louis seconded it for the gym. Marat and Louis. Okay, um. Okay, so, um, and Dan, could, could you also, as part of this, get a copy of their warranty?
Yes.
Alright, is that okay with Ron and Louis, who made the motion, uh, as part of this, please, um, get, get a copy of their warranty? Say it again? Yeah, five thousand, it's the forty-eight hundred plus the two hundred, yeah. Alright, so there's a motion and a second, any discussion on the board? Uh, any additional questions from out there? Any objection? Is there any objection to this item, do we need a roll call, or is there any objection? Anybody want to be recorded, no? Hearing none, it's approved. Next item is landscaping. Um, and there's two things on that, right? The first one is, uh, the fertilizer, so let's, this, that one.
That fert, that fertilizer was purchased, I don't know why that got into the, the packet.
Uh, well, let's just approve it anyway, because it was, um, we've had some issues and complaints about some of the, this, the condition of, um, our, uh, grass, people walking over it, needing new fertilizer, so, uh, let's just make a quick motion to approve that. Um, it was, uh, for how much? Was it?
Fifteen hundred.
It was exactly fifteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred, five, sixteen hundred, five hundred.
Okay.
So they're taking baby carriages, they're going across to near the lawn, the lawns.
Right, okay, so, for the fertilizer, um, need a motion to approve the, uh, the purchase of the fertilizer? Do we have a motion? For sixteen hundred, I think it was, right? Okay, sixteen hundred for the fertilizer, is there a motion? Anybody awake here? Hello, guys, are you guys awake over here?
Couldn't you buy new sod for that?
Yeah, it's in, but.
It's actually been bought.
Okay, uh, is there a motion?
George, I have a question for you.
Anyway, is there a motion?
Hold on a second, John, please. George, are you aware of this purchase?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make the motion.
Okay, Louis made the motion, um, I'll second it. Alright, and, uh, any objection is, anybody want to be recorded, no? Anybody want to re, uh, vote no on this? Okay, here. Okay, so you want to be recorded no on this?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else want to be recorded no on this item?
Doug around?
Uh, anyway, uh. Got it, right. Alright, so, um, we have, uh, a vote, there's one no vote, so it's approved. Next item is lawn contract, uh, landscaping contract. Dan.
Okay, you're current, I'm sorry. You're currently using Davey, uh, lawn care company. Uh, they have, on their contract for this year, two thousand seventeen. Their basic program cost from May two thousand sixteen to two thousand, April two thousand seventeen is six, sixty-three thousand, uh, two hundred and four dollars. And then the basic program for May through April of twenty eighteen goes to sixty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. So basically.
Which one was that for, which?
Davey.
Davey?
Davey.
We had a.
That's who you're using now.
Oh, that's who, I thought we were, um, I thought we were using a different company, OC. I thought we were using OC.
Well, I have, I have OC here also. OC is, is char, charging you, we charge you sixty-two thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. And then we, then I have a, a bid from GRC Landscaping, which is for fifty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. And they're all going to give you the same.
I remember we had problems with Davey when we had them, that's why they're not about the same. So that's, that's out of the question. Uh, so, GRC is fifty-three, and the other one?
Is sixty-two four.
Which one is that, my call?
OC is lawn, uh, OC Lawn is sixty-two four forty.
Okay.
GRC is fifty-three, one hundred.
Um, so, George, did you get a chance to check either of these companies out? GRC?
I don't know, the other two company, I know, uh, OC, OC are not working with us now. In the past, it was almost two years we worked with them, but they changed a different name.
Oh, they, they changed their name, okay, but they're way more expensive, it looks like, right?
Yeah.
What's the difference again?
We're dealing with this guy, finished this year only, we promised to give you the job for the next year. I'm not, we have to approve with proposal for the rest of the other companies.
Say it again, George, I didn't understand the last part.
We, we waiting for approval, have a bid for the other company, we have now, we can't pick anything.
Okay, so we're not under obligation to give the contract to them?
No, no, we don't have to.
Alright, um, I mean, okay, is it possible to say, it sounds like George is saying that OC is pretty good. Is it possible to come back to them and say, um, ask them if they can match this price, if not, go with GRC? I think that, we've done stuff like that, yeah. What, what's the cancellation policy on GRC?
They do not state a cancellation policy. Do not see a cancellation policy.
What, so OC's cancellation? Thirty-day, I say, it's number ten. It can be terminated with or without cause by either party on a thirty-day notice. Okay, so that's pretty good. What's the OC policy? It's the same thing, thirty-day, page three. With or without cause, I think they're the same. Alright, so, um, maybe, uh, we need is a motion to, uh, approve awarding the landscape contract to GRC Landscaping. Wait, what was the, uh, was the one OC, OC, I'm sorry, OC, right? Okay, approve, uh, OC if they can meet the GRC price, which is fifty-three hundred, fifty-three thousand, one hundred per year. If not, then, uh, GRC.
No, GRC is who you have now.
No, OC is who you have now. So the motion would be to approve, uh, OC, but at the GRC price. If they can't match that price, then, uh, hire GRC. Anybody want to make that motion? Guys, are you awake over here?
I'm awake, but I don't like to move.
Okay, so make your own motion.
I, I, you know, I just feel like we, we can cut it down on landscaping, and, and that's something that is really important in this place. Like, we're going to save some money, yeah, but it's prob, we don't even know if they're going to be any good. These people we have right now are not that good anymore. So we're going to a lesser company. Well, so we're saving, but the place eventually is going to look like crap.
Dan, can you, can you tell us, uh, can you give us your analysis of the current company? Or, well, George says they're okay, uh, what do you think?
Well, I mean, I guess to, to do the, the mow and go, that, that's fine, but, as you know, we, we have people here that are doing gardening for where the landscaping companies should be doing, uh, not so long ago, Pristine and Clive, around by the guardhouse, cleaning up weeds and putting down flowers, and in my mind, that's something that your, your landscaping company should be doing. Uh, other people plant flowers around their buildings. Again, that's something your landscaping company should be taking care of, you know, they, they, it seems that they come in, mow the lawns, and they take off. I understand that, but, and I, and I, and I think that's wonderful that she does. But you're paying a landscaping company to, to take care of your property. One of your residents, or several of your residents, should not have to go and clean up weeds, whether it be around the landscape, around the guardhouse, or be around your buildings, or about, around the pool, or wherever. I'm sure you remember the other day, uh, one of the first days that I was here, actually, that you came to me and told me that the guy was, uh, with the blower, putting, putting the grass clippings into the pool.
Exactly, but you know what, you have to spell out what, what they're supposed to be doing, you know the word?
It's in their contract. They, I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't have to go chase people around to make sure that they do their own, do the work.
Dan, Dan, let me ask you this, are you familiar with GRC?
I'm not one-hundred percent familiar with them, I've seen, seen some of their work around. It looks very nice, but I haven't actually worked with them.
Okay, um, in that case, why don't we just hire them, since we, we seem to have some issues with OC? Give them a chance, there, there's a thirty-day cancellation policy, a clause on this policy. So if they're, if they don't work out, we can cancel them after thirty days.
What happens if you went to one of these condos where they're doing the work and, and see, you know, what it's worth?
If we could get some volunteers to do that? Anybody want to do that?
Do you have any vacation day?
I see one of the housekeepers blowing the leaves.
Take a vacation day in.
You're the president.
Right, because I don't spend enough time on this place. Uh, it looks like it's a slightly over budget by a couple of thousand, Dan, is that correct?
I believe, I believe it is.
But it's, it's closer than the others. So, um, it's, it's the closest of all of them. Just a couple of thousand, I believe, right?
Yeah, I, I don't have to budget with you, yeah.
Right, I, I did notice that it was a little bit over, because I did check the budget, and it's a, if I remember correctly, it's a couple of thousand over. They're already the lowest.
No, I mean, it's, uh, what we have right now is.
Okay, but, but that was the one that we had, we were already having some problems with, right?
I, I'll talk to OC and see if they'll come down in their price, and see what they say.
I mean, that was my original motion, was to hire OC at GRC's price, um, but I didn't get a second. So.
No, if it was that, and then you said, and if they don't take it, then we'll just go with ours.
Right, GRC. Mm-hmm, right, but there's a thirty-day cancellation. Miriam.
I have a question, who's love to rake the leaves by our window, because they never clean up the weed, I'd be after.
Is that in the contract, Dan, uh, raking leaves?
They, they should be cleaning the beds, yes.
Leaf removal is in there, you're saying?
But they don't do it.
It is in there?
They don't do that, and they don't shrink it, they don't.
Okay, is, is leaf removal in GRC?
Pruning, all the, pruning of the hardwoods, removing paper and all debris.
Okay, okay, what about just this, look, instead of going through this whole contract, it is in there?
It's in there.
Okay, so, why don't we just make a motion to hire GRC? When there's a thirty-day cancellation, we can go back to OC. Alright, Marat, you want to make the motion to hire GRC?
Yes.
Okay, Marat made the motion, I'll second it. Uh, any, any more discussion on the board? Any more questions from the membership?
I do, I have a question.
Yes, Jackie.
Um, does that company prepare the trees for hurricane season?
No, that's separate, that's separate, I'm pretty sure that's separate, right, Dan?
But are we going to find out about that, because it's important for the entire budget?
It's always been separate. I, I would doubt if, if for a case. Tree trimming?
I just saw, pruning, all hardwood trees will be maintained at a level of ten feet clear from the ground. Palm fronds will be, will be remained at a level of eight feet from the ground. So basically, they are trimming the trees.
Oh, that's great. Um. Is that in the other one, is that in OC?
No, I don't think they are.
Oh, that's really good, okay.
And, and I, I know I specifically asked them, uh, with hurricanes, if we, if we are contracted with them for the year, not necessarily that we would get the first choice, but we are definitely on the list for them to come to the property and clean it up.
Okay, that's a big plus, because that's something we've always paid separately, I remember in past years, um, we had another contractor come in and do the, uh, the tree trimming for the hurricanes, so, if that's, if they're doing that as part of this contract, then we'd be under budget, because that, that's normally a separate expense. So I think that's, that's a really good plus. Uh, so there's a second, I mean, a, yeah, a motion and a second. Uh, any, any more discussion on the board? Anybody else out there want to chime in? Thanks, Jackie, that was a good question. Nobody else? Marat, Marat, I mean, sorry, Marcio, Marcio, what I just, I just, Marcio, hold on, are you listening? I said that it's actually un, under the budget, if tree trimming is included, that wasn't included on the previous contract. We always have to pay separately for, for tree trimming. So if it's included, right. Twenty thousand, very expensive. So we're, I mean, if it includes tree trimming, we're way under budget on this one, way under. Okay, Miriam.
Those ficus trees on Ivory Drive, who's responsible for those ficus trees?
The ficus trees, that was, uh, that's in very association.
Because there's, some of them are dying again from the white.
The new ones?
No, some of them are, you see the trees.
I think, I'm pretty sure, but we can check, Dan, can you check if that's, I think it is, uh, in very association, but check, can you check on that? Okay, and if that's the case, then, it would be the city, if that's the case, then, um, if you could ask them about, uh, ficus, um, you know, the white fly treatment. Alright, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any objection to passing this on the board? Hearing none, it's approved. Alright, um, next item is, uh, for actually, up to good and welfare. Okay. Marcia, Marcy, sorry, Marcy.
My favorite time of the meeting.
Uh, I had asked, uh, Dan. I had asked Dan.
Where are you?
Right here, I had asked Dan to please have easy-listening music outside. When I came in the other day, it's inside, I'd like to have it outside. You know, not jazz kind of music, but something soft outside the pool, Dan, okay? I have also asked that the wind of the doors be cleaned every single day for the handprints. I mean, if you look outside, the wind, the doors are closed. There's no reason to have those doors.
I'm checking on that, but you have to understand too, once, once they clean them, if the owners here come along and put their hands across it, I have nobody to come back later on in the day.
Well, then, you know what the problem is? That door going out to the pool doesn't slide open very easily.
I'll get it greased.
Okay, and therefore, you won't have the handprints, but if they do it every single day, two seconds to wipe it down, there's no reason not to do it.
Well, that door should be back when it be kept.
The other thing, what time is the barbecue supposed to be closed at?
That's what it was created for.
You're stop, you're supposed to stop using the barbecue itself at ten o'clock. Nothing, there is nothing that says anything about people gathering there.
Okay.